Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this special virtual meeting of the South Lion Community Schools Board of Education. Seven PM. Mr. Batte, will you call the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mrs. McDowell.
Here.
Mr. Leftwich.
Here.
Mr. Tal.
Here.
Mr. Schwegler.
Here.
Mr. Dashner.
I'm here.
I'm here, and Mr. Kennedy.
I am here. Thank you all for joining us virtually. Welcome to Mr. Leftwich, a new board member. Welcome back, Mr. Schwegler, and happy new year to everybody. Our former president, Ms. Hanshaw, is, her term has ended, so I am filling in this evening as your virtual president for this meeting. Item number three on our agenda is public comments. There are a few here. The first one, Jennifer Props, said, although very happy, my younger, very happy, my younger child is in person four days, I want to advocate for secondary to follow the same schedule. Going two days a week discourages them from going in person, although just a sample size, the kids I talked with would rather stay home than go in two days and sit for three, two-hour classes that has the teacher's attention divided between their face-to-face room and their virtual class. There's no incentive to attend in person. Next is Jessica Silva. She's speaking about her fifth-grade student at Brummer. Thank you, Mrs. Post, for working tirelessly to make the best out of a challenging situation. I offered the board the perspective of a fifth grader from last week's writing assignment to write a story about a difficult time in her life. Some parts omitted to fit character limit. She says, "Ugh, I hate virtual. I cried as I stopped to my room. I hated virtual with all the hate in my body. I don't know many people who do like virtual. After a while, I started to struggle a lot. My teacher didn't like virtual either, but she did her best and did an amazing job. I was getting worse and worse. Every assignment was really tough for me. My mom noticed and did the best she could to get me back on track. Once all of my missing assignments started to get turned in, I felt relief." Next is Stephanie Reif, who writes, "With the case count in Michigan being so low, I urge you to send all kids back full-time. If you haven't before, I ask you to listen, read the comments, and plans made by the superintendent of Novi schools. I feel very strongly that SLC as board has let our students down. They should have been in person since day one of the school year. The governor is pushing all students to be face-to-face. This is your opportunity to make things right for all of our students and get them back to person full-time." Next is Amy Menzer. "Please send our kids back to school five days a week as soon as possible. I have five children in the South Lion School District, and they all desperately want and need to be in person full-time. My elementary child has fallen back three grade levels in reading since the closure in March. My high schooler, who has had straight A's, is now a CED student. They're missing social skills that are crucial. Look at other districts. Many have been five days all along and many more plan on five days by February 1st of 21. Thank you." Next up is Craig Hearn, who says, "Please consider letting the kids go back to school. Virtual is not working. Face-to-face is what the kids need. I believe that the stress of kids on the computer and home is worse than anything else that can harm them. They are actually safer in schools, as seen by the Howell School District. South Lion is one of the only districts not to be doing face-to-face. Many parents are considering leaving the district because of this. Please let the kids back into school and maintain it through end of the year." Melissa Golden is next. She says, "In-person education." Dawn Pets is next. "I have a senior at East. I would like to know the board's plans if middle school and high school will ever be in person at 100% Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Wednesday remote, like at the elementary level. I realized that this was never addressed in any of the information that was communicated to parents. It only addressed a 50% in-person return, and then it was left open-ended without any information that it was going to be reviewed at a later time, or was just not an option at all. Could you please let us know what is in store for this option?" Jody Brzezinski says, "Seeing the excitement on my kid's face this morning, as I sent my first and sixth graders off to school this morning, made it very clear that this is what they want, what they need. Please follow Howell and other private schools and their guidelines and get these children back in the classroom five days a week. Enough half-day Wednesday for elementary and only two days for secondary. Hear the voice of the parents who actually chose to put their children in the classroom." Next is Michelle Roslinsky. "We have been asking for a choice to send our kids back to school face-to-face full-time. Starting with second semester, parents who do not want their kids face-to-face have the option to enroll their kids in virtual pathway. But the families who do want to send their kids face-to-face have that option too, and allow middle school and high school back face-to-face full-time. The middle school and high school kids need to be back in school full-time. The data supports it. Our district positivity rates support it. The governor even supports it. Give families the choice." Tammy Oliver is next. She says, "Face-to-face learning." Next is Christine Campo. "Back in August, the board was trying to decide to offer a choice of face-to-face or virtual schooling. The community witnessed a parent, who is now a board member, call in crying while reading every staff member's name at Brummer Elementary, saying they could die. Well, now the students and parents are crying and internally dying, trying to manage this virtual learning that they did not want to do from the get-go. Time for the board to listen to your students and community. The data supports five-day face-to-face." Next is Nicole Morales. "I would like to know when elementary schools will go back to five days a week in person." Candace Merva says, "Hello, I have second and first grade that I believe needs to be back to in-person learning. The social and emotional and mental health for my kids is at my best interest. I will fight to get the kids back in the classroom. I am for in-person learning, and I'm also for five full days. I do not think that online learning is for any of these kids. I belong to a group of 1,200 persons that is for in-person learning, and we are loaded, and we will fight for the best for our kids." Next is Brian Patrias. Patrias, I'll apologize if I've pronounced that incorrectly. "My kids have fallen behind in school and strongly dislike remote learning. I understand that teachers are doing their best, but there's nothing that can replace face-to-face learning. Please work together and figure out a way to get our kids back to school full-time ASAP. This has gone on too long. The vaccine is out and available to teachers." Finally, Craig Skolski says, "I have one student in Brummer and one in Millennium. I would like to see five days in person when we return from winter break if the downward case trend continues. Data from other local districts show that this can be done. I would also like to know why cleaning takes all of Wednesday to complete, as the district looked into using the weekends or evenings to achieve this. First graders need guidance throughout the school day." Had two, three more just pop up. Julianne Sleek says, "Please keep secondary children at 50%, capacity in hybrid." Patrick McGuire is next. He says, "I want to thank the board for making the very difficult decisions. They have to try to keep everyone safe. I hope going forward, the board is willing to be flexible and adjust to current situations. We all want our kids in school, but I hope the board continues to recognize if there are times this is not safe." Joe Kuzmano comments, "If you have, sorry, you have read many student and parent comments about desperately getting back to 100% in-person schools. Please define and publish the criteria, metric, and/or actions you are working to achieve before returning to five days per week. 100% old schedule, non-block. If the board and administration is unable to at least publish some criteria, metric, or actions, you are putting parents in a difficult position to move out of the district due to lack of any planning or goals on your part. Thank you." Christina Reeves says, "I appreciate the board for keeping our kids safe at home during this time. My son is able to concentrate on his schoolwork and not getting COVID and bringing it home to his family. I appreciate the options to keep our kids home." And that is the last public comment on the list for this moment. Our next item, number four on our list, is the extended COVID-19 learning planner reconfirmation, and I will turn that, I believe, over to Mr. Archbald to head that up.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Good evening and happy new year to everyone. Mr. Kennedy, was one of those first comments written by one of our fifth graders?
It looked like Mom wrote it, and what she posted in the subject matter was the little bit that her fifth grader wrote. Yes.
Yes. I commend that student for their passionate words, and nothing speaks to us louder than, or moves us more than our students. They are amazing. I just have a few brief comments, and I do sincerely appreciate all the public comments that come in. There are compelling points and comments on all sides of things, and certainly observing the fact that there's a variety of things, if not almost something different happening in every district around us, or many districts suggest that there is no magic pill or magic way through this, but we'll continue to do our best, and I do want to share some of the local health data. It is, our county data has been trending in a favorable direction for several weeks, which is excellent news. In previous presentations I've shared with the board and the community, the cases by age group for Oakland County, and we reported previously the school-aged groupings for, again, for the county, and these have been trending downward for the past five to six reporting cycles and are currently at or near where they were in mid to late October. Certainly a trend that we would like to continue. The positive cases and the cases per 10,000 in the South Lion geographical area within Oakland County have both been trending downward over the same period and are also near what they were in mid to late October. And again, those by no means are all the metrics to be looking at, but to be consistent with information we've shared in the past, I certainly wanted to share that in that we know from our past experiences how the community spread has impacted us in schools, and it is truly fabulous to see the numbers moving favorably. We have definitely learned a great deal over the past several months about effective strategies to reduce the spread of the virus. We know from our own experiences that schools can establish a low risk of transmission by following the mitigation strategies and safety protocols that South Lion Community Schools and other districts have put in place. We, and by "we," I imply our entire community, must remain diligent in these efforts to help keep each other safe and to be in a position not only to maintain the current level of face-to-face instruction that we resume today, but to ultimately increase it in the future. Our next confirmation plan comes before the board on February 1st, and it would be my hope and desire at that point to be able to share some information about being able to increase face-to-face instruction at the secondary level, provided that the factors that we've outlined in the past have continued to move favorably. But I want to stress, while safety is paramount, I want to stress to everyone that face-to-face instruction is something that we continue to strive for, and to be quite honest with you, won't settle until we're there. Right now, I feel we're a little bit of our version of the Three Little Bears. Bear with me through this, people. It's a new year. With what we're offering with our in-person, it is not enough for some. It's too much for others. It's just right for a third. And we need to continue to move in that direction. I think we heard it from our governor last week in stressing the importance of having students face-to-face, and it's time that we continue, or time that we work to move in that direction. Some, it was commented on the vaccine. Those eligible to receive the vaccine was expanded this week to include pre-K through 12 educators and support staff, childcare workers who usually come in contact with children. Obviously, this is extremely exciting and encouraging news. Currently, the demand for vaccinations is so great in comparison to the supply that there are no appointments available, at least in Oakland County. We will continue to work with, that's my understanding also, from what I read tonight, that they're continuing to work through Group 1A and teaching staff and school personnel are in Group 1B. And again, the fact that it's been recognized and to have us that early in the vaccination process speaks to the importance of schools continuing to function and folks remaining healthy. So again, that is extremely exciting and encouraging. We will continue to work closely with our Oakland County Health Department regarding additional vaccine rollout and additional appointments and make certain that our staff has that information and are able to move forward with vaccinations. On Friday, there was new guidance for schools. The governor announced a goal that all school districts offer an in-person option for students as soon as possible and no later than March 1st. Our current mode of instruction achieves that goal. However, we fully recognize, we fully recognize the social, emotional, and academic benefits gained through in-person learning, and will continue to work to increase our in-person learning to the extent possible. Also on Friday, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services released new guidelines for operating schools safely. These guidelines are intended to replace the Safe Schools roadmap from June. Our team is in the process of reviewing the revised guidelines to determine what, if anything, needs to be revised with respect to our current safety protocols and mitigation strategies. We'll certainly notify staff, students, and families, but they should continue to follow the current practices until they are notified otherwise. From what I have read so far, these may be just mostly changes in name only, and that many of our current mitigation strategies and safety protocols, again, which we've known to be effective, will likely remain in place. But again, it's, we want to make sure that we're going through it very thoroughly in order to adjust accordingly. So that's just some additional background information, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Kudwa with the agenda motion.
Yes, the extended COVID-19 learning plan was presented to the Board of Education on September 21st, 2020, and Oakland ISD did approve our district's extended COVID learning plan on September 30th. We are required to reconfirm once every 30 days thereafter the instructional delivery method, along with reviewing the weekly two-way interaction rate. At this time, the administrative team is not recommending any changes to the instructional delivery method. Our weekly two-way interaction rates are included in the report and are well above the required 75%, and we recommend that you approve the continuation of the instructional delivery method as described in the extended COVID-19 learning plan.
Thank you, Ms. Kudwa, and Mr. Archbald. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the extended COVID-19 learning plan as presented.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Dashner, supported by Ms. Urte. Comments or questions on the motion?
I do have a few questions, if you guys don't mind if I go first.
Sure, Dan.
So Steve, I know this might be a little too early to answer, but do you have any sort of projection on when you estimate teachers will actually be vaccinated in the district? I know they can't get appointments yet, but how far out are these appointments going, and so we can start to get them?
Yeah, I don't have an exact answer on that. Mr. Schwegler would certainly, you know, I believe there were some staff, if not in our district, I know in other districts who were able to get their first dose or will be able to this week. The county shared with us last week on Thursday that they are not making any appointments unless they have the actual doses to go along with those appointments, so that they aren't making appointments and have to cancel them and change. So I don't have that information right now. I would hope, based on, or I would sense, based on our conversations with the county, they are, you know, I have a better idea of that perhaps in a week or so. They are prepared, by "they," I mean the county, to... They said they have made arrangements to use, I believe, nobody's showplace, so if and when they get an increase in supply, we'll add the doses. So we're all anxiously awaiting additional details on appointments. I think that was a long answer to not even answer really your question.
And that's okay, because there's kind of a series of questions that relate around. Is there somebody in the district tracking which employees get it, and is there any sort of prioritization? Or is this a free-for-all, where it's upon the teacher or the employee to schedule their own vaccination?
It is on the individual employees. I've contemplated putting out a survey to be able to monitor, if I can, without essentially a HIPAA violation to get a sense of which staff. So I want to work through that, to be quite honest, but I think it's important that we know that, to the extent that we that we can. And in terms, it is really free-for-all, I think was the word you used. First come, first served is the way it's been phrased in the literature. The staff can get the, if they don't live in Oakland County, but they're able to get it in the county in which they live, I believe that is still okay. And through the Oakland County Health Department, you can sign up to get a notification via text and email when additional appointments are available. And so we've shared that information with staff as well. We've also shared with the county because the windows for the administration of the vaccine are obviously largely over working hours and school hours. And so we've communicated that to them in hopes to make more slots available on the weekends and outside the work hours, so staff don't have to miss school to be able to be vaccinated if they don't have to, which is, you know, a further problem.
Are you going to be requiring vaccinations from all employees? Because I know, I think I read that it's, employers have the ability, but I don't know as a public school if you have the ability to require that, or if you want to.
Well, we have the ability, I believe. We do not have the policy to that effect. I have consulted with Kevin Sutton, one of our attorneys, and his recommendation at this point would be to leave it voluntary and obviously make the information available and go from there. But while, again, in his term, while we can require it, it comes with many caveats, which at this point may make most sense, and his recommendation to continue to make it voluntary.
Thank you. All right, I'll stop for now unless I think of any of these.
Anyone else?
We haven't had a meeting in a long time, so I'm talking a lot, so I apologize.
Sorry, Steve. Mr. Batte.
Miss, thank you. So, Mr. Archibald, I'm happy to hear you talking about the beginning of February. Are you thinking that we're going to kind of ramp up our discussion of how to bring kids back at that point? Are you thinking about bringing sort of the shell of a plan at that point? What's your general thought process on that timeline there?
My thought would be the shell of a plan at that point, and it's been something that, you know, we've been talking about obviously for a while, but we want to be able to look at the new guidance and then work with our teams to put plans in place to bring secondary students back more face-to-face. So I would, we'd be ramping that up now and bringing something to you, again, assuming the circumstances would allow us to go forward with it.
All right, great. Yeah, and that's, I just, I'm glad that that's the direction we're headed. I mean, we've promised the community that as we, as things improved and the trajectory went the right direction, that we would, we would come up in response and try to do more so. If that's the, if we're headed there, then I feel good.
We're headed there.
Mr. Dashner.
Mr. Archibald, I thought I recall early on when we were discussing COVID plans, and this is probably going back to the summer, that there was an idea of, if we were full-time in schools, call it five days a week at the secondary level, at that point, we wouldn't be requiring the teachers to teach remotely anymore, just because of the impact that that has on the classroom, and the idea would be all the kids would be back in the classroom. And it might be too early for me to ask this, but would that still be the case, that if we do go back face-to-face at the secondary level, that the teachers would just be teaching to the classroom and also to remote students that might be quarantined or otherwise not able to be in school?
Yeah, I don't want to get too far out ahead of the, out of the work and the plan, but my initial reaction would be, at that point, if we're, we have 100% of our students in the classroom, and again, whether it's four or five days a week, there's merit to both. I think at some point, we need to take something off of the plate of the teachers and to continue to teach remotely with 100% of their students in front of them. So I would, it would be my, again, we don't have a plan in front of us yet, but if I had a crystal, if I had to, if I had to decide today, I would say then that we would be fully in person at that point, and if we were four days a week, the only remote day would be Wednesday.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess one of the concerns that I have with, you know, if you had students in the classroom and a teacher teaching remote, is I'm not sure how many kids may or may not show up, because it's, I think it's kind of struggling where they're bringing in all their devices, sitting at a table, looking at their teacher sit at their table. I had a couple people text me today that, you know, they're, you know, my kids are back into the alphabet, so the front end of the alphabet are texting, saying that there's only four or five other kids in the classroom at the high school level, when really there should be maybe 15 or 16, if you're truly at 50% with most classes between 30 and 35. Just because, you know, they're in the classroom, they're on their device, looking at the device, where even though the teacher might be sitting at their desk, you know, they're teaching the other kids at home, trying to teach the kids in class, but they're not kind of... you know, they're teaching the other kids at home, trying to teach the kids in class, but they're not kind of up and moving around. There's, you know, the kids in class are still looking at their devices for the lesson. So I think that's deterring a lot of the high school kids who perhaps have their own transportation, don't have parents that are pushing them to be in school or requiring them to, you know, grab the bus to get in or whatever, if they can just do the same thing sitting in their room as opposed to being in the classroom. So I think, you know, if, when the time comes that you're looking at full-time face-to-face at secondary, you know, if there's any way to try to encourage the teachers, you know, to be out from behind the desk and not having to do that kind of combo remote and in person at the same times, I think both sides are not getting the hundred percent instruction.
Yeah, I think our current model has served us well, in particular with respect to students who are in quarantine because they were able to continue and we have provided through our model a hundred percent of asynchronous instruction as opposed to the on, on day, off day, where that off day is asynchronous. It is certainly very challenging and difficult for our teachers. And I would think when we're at a hundred percent, again, the big advantage to that would be moving a little bit more closely to what we know as, as traditional instruction, which has been, you know, one of the concerns that's been raised.
Great. Thank you. Can I go next? I have a concern about when we move to more days face-to-face at the secondary level because many families chose the hybrid option because of the staff that they were going to be getting or the, the access to the curriculum that they, that they preferred, that they strongly wanted to have South Lion teachers. And it does kind of feel like a bait and switch to take away the option, the, the location for attendance option, if that makes sense.
So we did make sure we communicated with families prior to that, that window opening that if they thought there was a, a time in second semester that they did not want their student back full-time in person, that they really truly needed to pick the LPs. We were very clear in our messaging as we had them pick their choice for second semester because we recognized that our goal was going to be bringing students back as much as possible in person. So we didn't want it to feel like there was any kind of bait and switch. We wanted to be clear with families as they made their decision that if you had hesitation about sending your child back, the model for you was going to be the VLP model.
Right, but if they chose a VLP model, they wouldn't necessarily be guaranteed access to a South Lion teacher. Is that right? They, they might have to choose a vendor-provided class.
It depends on what courses they were taking. So middle school was fully South Lion teachers, whether you were in-person hybrid or you were in the VLP, and high school is a mix of both.
Okay, so that helps clarify, but I have heard from high school families in the community that they are concerned about, they chose the hybrid path because they wanted the South Lion teachers. And it, it just, if there's an opportunity to allow for one more switch, I don't know, but I'm, I'm, I'm just expressing concerns that have been brought to me as a board member and I'm sharing it with the rest of, of the team.
So at this point, we are nearly done building the second semester schedule, including staffing the appropriate sections, having people where they need to be. It would be a major strain on the system to allow families to make another shift at this point in that process. I, I don't know that we could have a second semester schedule ready for second semester if we were to open that back up and there were to be major changes one way or the other.
I'm just sharing with you what's been, what's been shared to me.
Anyone else? All right, that we have a motion on the floor. With no further comments, we can proceed to vote. Mr. Bate, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Kennedy.
I vote yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Dashner.
I vote yes.
Mr. Swegler.
Yes.
Mr. Tao.
Yes.
Mrs. McDowell.
Yes.
And Mr. Leffwitch.
Yes.
Our vote is seven to zero. Motion carries. Onto item number five, public comments. I should have mentioned this at the beginning of our meeting in this new year. For our public comments, if you filled out the form online to have your comment read in the virtual format, you would need to give us your name as part of the public record, and it would be the same as if you, if we were meeting face-to-face, you would be on video and give us your name. So to make that clear, so we don't miss anybody, a couple more comments from the public on our list. Karen McCola, Mikola, first, I would like to state that case counts have been decreasing from levels ten times higher than the summer, but at fall levels now. I really wish individuals would actually look at the raw data instead of just making talking points without fully understanding the context. Secondly, high schoolers at a hundred percent is asking thirty-five kids to be side by side all day. Class sizes weren't reduced with the introduction of a fully virtual model. Finally, the health department still wants distancing in schools or in school. Finally, Lynn Knox says, I have no other way to say this as I am limited to how much I can say. I've stood by and agreed and supported your choices. My daughter recently has told her therapist that she has a plan to end her life. This isolation needs to end. I had a speech written to explain it all to you, but I need to speak straight to the point. I know that my child is not the only one that is in this place. I fear this district has failed my child. We have no option to move. Please, face-to-face is the only option. Jennifer Gamori says, is the movement into in-person going to be incrementally going to seventy-five percent or straight to a hundred percent? Governor Whitmer stressed that in-person learning should include social distancing. District officials have stated that social distancing is not possible at all, if a hundred percent in many secondary classrooms.
Eric, if I'm sorry, if I may jump in real quick, I believe Ms. Knox did say that she plans to call in if we want to give her an opportunity.
Yes, I do now see that. She did resubmit. So Ms. Knox, star six to unmute yourself on your phone if you were on the line. If you'd still like to speak. Okay, last call for public comments. Ms. Knox, are you there? Star six should unmute your phone.
Looks like somebody just joined.
Yeah, we'll give her a second.
I'm sorry, I'm here. Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, I am sorry. I guess I'm going to read my full speech. Originally, I was going to try and come forward anonymously because I didn't want my daughters in. Okay, let me, I'm sorry, let me turn my computer off here. There we go, because it was backlogged. I'm sorry. I was going to come forward anonymously because my daughter's information is in this, but I could not do that. I have listened to most of the board meetings and sat back and understood everywhere you guys are coming from. I work as a lead MA in a very large family practice. In the spring, I was reassigned to work on the COVID floors in the hospital system I work for. Is there, I saw celebrations when patients on vent went home. I also saw CPR that was unsuccessful. I have prepped a patient who has passed to bring them, the deceased, to the makeshift morgue. I have held the hand of a nurse while they told a family member over the phone that their loved one has passed. Now that I am back in the office, I deal with COVID on a daily basis. Calls from patients who want to be seen with COVID-like symptoms to patients who are scared to come in for a simple checkup because they're afraid they may contract COVID. My eldest daughter is a paramedic in the metrodatory area and was deployed by FEMA to New Jersey in the spring with a spike. And most of her job was carrying the deceased to cold, empty freezers that were semis. I do not tell you this for all the accolades or a pat on the back. I tell you this so you know that I know, sorry, I tell you this so you know that I am well aware of the dangers of COVID and the spread. I receive daily and hourly updates concerning the ever-changing information on COVID and now the upcoming vaccines that will be administered to the public. I stand before you not as a medical assistant, but as a woman who has done all that is above, I stand before you as a mother. A mother is a child with a child who is suffering. A family who moved to the South Lion district for the start of a school year last year. My daughter was having some troubles adjusting to the new system, as any child might, when we were dealing with these issues. Then March, school stopped, which we all know why and understand. My husband and myself would not have any clue the devastation that would cause my twelve-year-old daughter. My daughter was diagnosed with ADHD just the year before we moved, and we were working on medication adjustments as well as behavioral problems that were associated with, with this diagnosis and the new district. We have been working with the therapist on all issues. Over the summer, we started to know some, notice some significant changes. First, very subtle, but it, over the weeks, they became more and more obvious. She was reaching out to anyone she felt she could connect with, and I do mean anyone. Even though we had rules and other parameters in place, she was able to meet, and I do say quote unquote, fifteen-year-old boy from California. And we all know he most likely was not a fifteen-year-old boy. By the time I was able to intervene, she was already sexting with this person at the age of thirteen, saying things that as a grown adult would make me blush. We are lucky it did not go any further, but it's sad to say that we were very fortunate in this part. Most parents cannot say the same. After the dust settled and we implemented further measures to ensure this does not happen again, the mild depression that my daughter had suffered from was she was spiraling out of control. My daughter has tested a very high IQ and, and other educational tests, but yet is failing multiple classes. I've reached out for educational services only to find out that, one, she most likely will not even qualify for any extra assistance. And two, in order for, in order to find out if she does qualify, teachers would need to have time, have some time for observation, and with the current educational plan will take months, not weeks as it normally would. Then, a month ago, I received a call from her therapist. He had very serious concerns for her safety. She had a plan. Plans are normally a good thing, but not here. She had a plan to end her life. He had asked us to regularly lock up all sharp objects in my house, from butter knives to kitchen knives to tools. My sweet, beautiful, happy angel who would do anything for anyone and do, and make anyone smile, smile, no longer wanted to live because of the isolation. She was tired of it all. She had very few friends at the new school and in her old school, her friends were far away. I've stood by and made, and not made a fuss over the face-to-face time in school. I, as a person who is responsible for maintaining PPE for my staff as well as cleaning supplies, understand how hard it is on top of the parameters that are put on the district due to contracts. I understand the fear that was racing through the community with all that we hear in the news as the rises in cases and number of deaths. I knew, I knew what it was like to be helpless and having people telling you how you should or should not be doing your job. As people are still doing this, I get it. I really do. But now, now I must speak up. I need to advocate for my daughter. I am her mother, and all my kids call me Mama Bear because I will fiercely protect all of my children until my last breath. I know that not, I know everyone is scared, if not terrified, of the risk of COVID. But let me give you some numbers that may, that may let you see what I am seeing from the medical field. These numbers are a little bit old as they don't have full dates yet. The death rate in two thousand and nineteen was eight point seven eight two percent. The death rate in two thousand and nineteen, currently estimated as they're finishing it, is nine point one percent. That is an increase, but not significant. The, the death rate from COVID as of date in the U.S. is only one point six percent. According to the CDC, suicide is the tenth leading cause overall in the United States, claiming the lives of over forty-eight thousand people in two thousand and eighteen. Suicide is the second leading cause of individuals in the ages of ten to thirty-four. There were more than two and a half times as many suicides in the U.S. than there were homicides. I know these numbers are old, but the numbers will come out and show you it's not as scary as we thought it once was. There has to be a point and when we have to stop living in fear and create, creating a culture of fear. We need to teach our children to face difficulties head-on and not to run and hide from them. Many may see, many say that keeping a person in solitary confinement is inhumane, but yet essentially, that is what we are doing with our youth. Our kids are our future, and we are not giving them a fair shot at life with the way things are. They need to socialize. They need to learn. They need to live. I implore you to return our children to a hundred percent face-to-face learning as soon as you can. No more hybrids. Any medical professional will tell you there are deficits these children are suffering. Those that are fearful or have health concerns may choose the virtual option. But it is not the path that a large majority of our students need. My daughter needs to learn. My daughter needs to live. We are lucky enough to intervene quickly before any life-altering decisions were made by her. We are also lucky enough that she was able to express her feelings to her therapist. I, I do believe we were weeks away from losing my thirteen-year-old daughter. We are on the path of, of her healing. We are learning how to better help her, and she is learning better how to help herself. I know we are not the only family this has happened to, but I will speak for all the parents who cannot or feel fearful of speaking. Our children need you. We voted for you to have our children's best interest in your thoughts. And in the beginning, I believe you did. I still do believe you do, you do now. Please do not continue to live in fear. Thank you.
And thank you. There are two more comments that have just come in. Amy Cresswell says, while I'm very pleased to hear the board's plan to move towards more face-to-face instruction in the near future, I remain extremely disappointed to hear that there is once again no sign of any type of plan. Our kids are better off with in-person instruction. Half of this community remains unrepresented by this board. Please do what you were elected to do and adequately represent the full community and take action now. And Mr. Archibald, I implore you to do what you were hired to do. Be a leader. Our final one comes from Joe Cusmano. Again, Mr. Archibald, he quoted public health metric case, cases counts, effective strategies to reduce risk and the need for diligence regarding virus. Yes, guess what? We already know that. Please focus on being an educator and not a public health official. You say you recognize the benefits of in-person learning, but your comments only reflect concerns for the virus, not for teaching. You have said nothing that indicates you are being diligent with your primary role. Please get with the program. That's our last comment for the evening. With nothing more, I would ask for a motion to adjourn as item number six on the agenda. So moved.
Support.
Motion to adjourn from Mr. Abate. Motion to adjourn from Mr. Abate and supported by Ms. Urtehl. Mr. Abate, would you call the roll, please?
Sure. And real quickly, I just want to say welcome, Mr. Leffwich. Good to put a face to the name. And we can close up. I'm Mr. Leffwich. I'll call on you first.
Yes.
Mrs. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Tell?
Yes.
Mr. Swegler?
Yes.
Mr. Dashner?
I vote yes.
I vote yes. And Mr. Kennedy?
I vote yes. Motion to adjourn carries seven zero. We stand adjourned.
Good night, all.
Have a good night, everybody.